Hi, good evening and welcome to the Planning Commission Meeting of August 10th. I'm going to ask Commissioner Donner if he will lead us tonight in our Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, thank you. Madam Secretary, could you please provide the role for this evening?
Please let the record show that all Planning Commissioners are present as well as Deputy City Attorney Jennifer Farrell on teleconference.
Okay, and then we'll move forward to approval of the meeting minutes from our meeting of July 13th.
I move we approve the minutes as written.
If you could vote please. Okay, that shows passing with Commissioner Nelson abstaining since he was not here that evening. All right, do we have any items this evening for public hearing that are for public comment that are not on our agenda?
No.
Thank you. So then we will move forward to consent calendar. We have nothing on the consent calendar this evening. So then we will move forward to a public hearing which is a coastal development permit, CDP 20-0013, for a lot line adjustment at 20, sorry, 34-297 and 34-293 Pacific Coast Highway. Do we have a staff report this evening?
Mr. Dew, Senior Planner John Champ will provide a staff report.
Good evening Chair Opal and Planning Commissioners. Before you today is a request for a coastal development permit to allow for a lot line adjustment at the property locate, properties located at 34293 and 34297 Pacific Coast Highway. Project site is located within the Dana Point specific plan in the coastal couplet commercial zoning designation. The project site is located within the coastal overlay for the city and is located in the corner or at the corner of Pacific Coast Highway and Doheny or Dana Point Harbor Drive. The existing project site, as you can see here, the lot on the corner is an unimproved lot currently and the project, the interior lot is improved with a commercial structure. Project scope is requesting to reconfigure the rear property lines, transition the rear portion of the property from parcel one to parcel two. Parcel one would increase from 19,700 square feet to fifty, or would decrease from 19,700 square feet to 15,000 square feet and parcel two would increase from 9,000 square feet to 13,700 square feet. The coastal couplet commercial designation within the specific plan does not require a minimum lot size or dimensions and the lot line adjustment, given that it's a subdivision action, requires a coastal development permit through the city. This is, as you can see here, the existing and proposed configuration of the properties. As you can see here, under the existing, the back portion is encompassed of parcel one and then that would transition with the, to the proposed configuration. The proposed proposal complies with the requirements associated with the coastal development permit, given that it complies with the city's local coastal program. There are no impacts to public recreation or public outs, access. The nearest public access point is at Doheny State Beach, which is approximately 850 square, or 850 linear feet from the site. Project meets the required findings, given that it does conform to the city's local certified local coastal program. The project is consistent with the provisions under the zoning code or specific plan and that the project conforms to the public access and public recreation requirements of the Coastal Act. That concludes staff's presentation. Staff is recommending approval of the coastal development permit before you today. That concludes staff's presentation. Staff and the applicant are available for any questions.
Okay, thank you for that presentation. At this time, do any of the Commissioners have questions of staff? Commissioner McCann?
Thank you. Would the, would this revision was, parcel one looked at it, will it be in compliance with all the codes relative to like landscaping as a percentage of lot area and things like that?
So the parcel one, which is the
The Jack in the Box?
The Jack in the Box site, so the scope of the review was not for compliance with the landscape requirements. However, the, any improvements to that site associated with the development to that site would require any, any upgrades or necessary improvements to that. I can't say that there is a permit before the city under review for improvements to that site and that would be something that would be looked at at that point in time.
But I'm wondering if, if it was considered if we're creating a substandard lot by today's, by today's, you know, requirements? If that was considered? Like, for example, so if Jack in the Box, let's assume that the LLA had already happened and Jack in the Box came in and wanted to plop on parcel one and it's almost all pavement and very little landscaping. Would, would that by itself be approved? Do you think, I mean, and maybe you didn't study it and that's, that's an answer too, right?
Yeah, correct. And it wasn't, the landscape compliance was not incorporated in terms of the review. It was strictly on consistency with the lot configuration requirements and any impacts easements associated with the request.
Okay. Out of curiosity, was there like a reason why that wasn't considered? Or, or maybe just wasn't thought about or maybe it's not in the scope of considering, consideration for an LLA?
It wasn't in the scope of the consideration for the lot line adjustment, but I can't say that improvements that are proposed for the site, like any kind of development or reconfiguration of the parking lot, at that point in time, that's when the landscaping would be looked at.
Right, okay. Is the, the parcel to the south along the adjoining to the south where that used to be that hotel that got demoed? Is that owned by the same ownership group as, as these parcels?
That's correct.
Okay. And do we, normally an LLA is done kind of in anticipation of something that they're intending to do. Do we know what, what that is?
We, the city hasn't received any formal submissions, however, the owner, you know, may be proposing some type of hotel or commercial type development, given that that is, you know, the typical uses within this zone.
Okay. Thank you. I have no further questions.
Commissioner Donner?
Yeah Jonathan, the 20-foot easement that goes from the Jack in the Box lot to Harbor Drive, is, that's fenced off now? Is that going to be opened up? Will there be access from, from the Jack in the Box lot to the Dana Point Harbor Drive?
So yes, that, that access easement that would be proposed would allow for access through the Jack in the Box site or parcel one to parcel two at that, that back portion or the flag portion of parcel one. So that would allow that access and that will be recorded under a separate instrument as part of this, the completion of this effort.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Murphy, do you have any questions? Right, thank you. I have none myself. So at this time, I will open the public hearing. Do we have any requests to speak for this particular item?
No, Chair Opal.
All right, I will then close the public hearing and turn it over to Commissioner Discussion. Is there anyone that would like to go first? Okay, Commissioner McCann?
I find myself a little bit surprised at my own thoughts, but I'm thinking that that parcel one should be evaluated based on, does it comply with the kind of the requirements that we're, we're looking at? And let me tell you why. I worked on a project one time and there was a four acre site and there was three acres which were all developed with parking lot and apartment building and there was a fourth, the fourth acre was just by itself and completely undeveloped. But the reason it was is because in order to meet and comply with the codes, that density had to be spread out over four acres and not just three acres. And, and I'm just thinking that, I don't know, it's possible that we're creating a substandard lot here by our standards. It'll, may or may not ever get redeveloped in the foreseeable future, so we ought to consider that. So I personally would like to see that considered, looked into and then brought back to us.
So I've done a few lot line adjustments in my day and generally speaking, I don't have any real issue with this. I certainly understand Commissioner McCann's concerns. But at the same time, most jurisdictions, you know, lot line adjustment doesn't even have to go through a public review like this. I think it's the coastal zone that kicks this thing in and I don't see any material, I mean, I don't see anything on the plan that looks like it's far from what is allowed. I know that at least in the staff report, there's no minimum lot size, so we're not hurting. In fact, we're increasing the lot size to the smallest corner piece, which I think I'd be more concerned about its ability to develop appropriately without enough land. You know, I remember when there was a liquor store there and I used to go there when I was a kid with my dad. I didn't go by myself, obviously, to pick up alcohol, but my dad did and it was a little teeny building on a little teeny site and by adding some square footage, I think that's a good thing. So I don't have any major concern supporting this because what they proposed is really just moving and reshuffling some lines. It seems consistent with our local coastal program and our zoning code and doesn't have access issues relative to the coast. So, you know, for those reasons, I don't have a huge issue getting behind it. I would entertain, you know, the ideas that you brought up, Mr. McCann. But I'd like to hear some of the areas where we may have an issue there before we subject the applicant to a further city review. That's my thinking.
Commissioner Donner?
Yeah, I, when I was looking at this, the curb cuts that are on the parcel two look like they're inadequate to move traffic in and out on Coast Highway. So by adding the access or egress on the, the Dana Point Harbor Drive, I think that's an improvement for the, for the parcel and for the city. So I'm, I'm supportive of this, but I understand Commissioner McCann's concerns and I guess that's, that's something that I would be interested in knowing the answer to. Thanks.
Commissioner Murphy, any comments?
No, having listened to the comments, it does raise a couple of So I don't see that there's a factor here that we have to do something tomorrow on this or make decisions. I would be fine with it, but I do hear hints of maybe we need to change some things.
Thank you. I think my concerns originally were not an issue, but with Commissioner McCann bringing up the concerns of the requirements for future development and then if you look at that easement for the 20-foot, you're going to take away a lot of space for any potential landscaping in that area to have sufficient parking for, but not knowing what's going to be there, it would be a future requirement. So I'd be supportive unless there's a condition of what's required for future, but I don't know if that can be done for a lot line. So I will put it out there for a motion.
Did you want to try to craft something that makes sense or that, you know, that we can all get behind relative to a condition that could run with the project or did you, I guess what I'm not clear on is exactly what are we asking staff to study?
Well, I guess, I mean, first of all, like I said, I was surprised at my own thoughts because I didn't think an LLA is a big deal. I would be, and I'm also sympathetic to applicants having to all of a sudden do, jump through a bunch of hoops, hoops. Although I don't think there's probably a lot here. We could do something like, it's tentatively approved, subject to staff reviewing to make sure that it's compliant with, with what they would look at. I mean, like, it's not going to have an FAR problem, right? So the only thing that I'm kind of thinking is landscaping, but I don't know what other problems or issues there might be. I'm assuming there's none other, other than potentially, you know, percent of landscaping. And we could even give some kind of a conditional approval that's subject to staff reviewing that and additional conditions, they could either place additional conditions on it themselves or bring it back to us.
Yeah, so I would, I mean, I think, you know, the idea of putting future conditions, I think would be a problem for obvious reasons, but trying to figure out a way to keep this moving forward and, and I don't know how because you don't have a project. So the lines are at the lines and what's out there is what's out there. It may be legal nonconforming at this point or not legal, nonconforming relative to how much landscape there is.
Well, right now, the, you know, there's, you know, there's a certain amount of pavement, right? And they've got that, that easement area all the way down to Harbor Drive that's unpaved, which, you know, affects their percent of hardscape or whatever, right? Now all of a sudden, we're taking that away and throwing it to the other parcel. That affects that calculation. I'm not super married to this. If you want to make a motion just to move forward and see where it goes.
All right. So I'll go ahead and move that we approve the lot line adjustment, CDP 20-0013 for a lot line adjustment at 34-297 and 34-293 Pacific Coast Highway.
A question. The, the pass through from the parcel to the, to the drive that goes all the way through. Now you've created a traffic pattern that someone could come down Coast Highway, come in the Jack in the Box and go out on the Dana Point Harbor Drive. So now you've created a possible traffic problem with that easement that's opened up. So is there some reason, because it's not beneficial to the Jack in the Box to have the cut through to Dana Point Drive? So if that's not the case, then, then that wouldn't affect the landscaping if that were fenced off and there wasn't access there. Is there some reason there has to be access to Dana Point Harbor Drive?
Given that it's the, the same property owner owns both of these parcels plus the one to the south, they obviously have something in mind that, that we don't know what it is at this time. But clearly, they're, they're saying that they want to formalize access across the Jack in the Box lot to get back to that more southerly piece. But they haven't shown us a project that, as to why.
Yeah, and all I'm saying is that, that, that can create a traffic problem that, that doesn't exist now.
So maybe it would be easier if we, if we, there was a motion on the table that we either second it or just let it die and then we can discuss it or make, second it for discussion, if we actually hammer through this.
Hearing no second, I'll make a motion. I move that we continue this item and ask staff to look into how parcel one would be in compliance if that was coming to us fresh today.
Point of clarification, parcel one, what you're referring to is Jack in the Box, correct?
Yeah, the proposed parcel one, I guess I should say.
So the proposed parcel one is actually smaller than the existing parcel. So by having a smaller parcel, the landscape requirement is actually less than it would be today.
Okay, I understand, but there's, there's X amount of landscaping out there now on, on proposed parcel one. Would that comply, would that meet today's requirements?
So if, assuming that today's conditions, it's existing nonconforming. So if we were to reduce the size of the parcel, it's potential, the landscaping is still nonconforming, but it would be nonconforming in a lesser manner.
As a percentage, it might be nonconforming in a, in a, in a greater manner.
It'd be smaller, because if you're nonconforming under the existing condition, then it's potentially nonconforming in a lesser manner if it's, if it's a parcel smaller.
Well, I guess I'm, I'm assuming that the whole southerly strip that they're proposing to change the line around and give that from, from parcel one to parcel two, that that's factoring into their landscape, landscaping right now?
We'd be certainly happy to come back with you with the analysis of the landscape coverage to show whether or not it's existing nonconforming or perhaps it's conforming.
Is there any urgency on this issue from the applicant's perspective?
And we do have the applicant present if they want to provide some additional insight. John, do you understand if there's any urgency to this to if we can bring it back for our next meeting?
I'll let the applicant speak to that.
The applicant as, for the civil engineer on the project. I don't know the urgency. I know he's been, we've been battling through, getting through the city to get to this point. It's taken a matter of, I think he initially submitted his lot line adjustment in December. After the initial submit, all he was told we had to go through the coastal development permit. That's when he brought us on board and you add on what we've all dealt with COVID. This has taken about six months to get to this point. I don't know what the applicant's end game is, but I do know as of this moment, he's moving these lines for financial reasons. I don't know if he's going to sell off one parcel, two parcels, three parcels. I do know that he is taking two nonconforming, smaller sized lots, which is labeled as parcel two. They actually is two existing lots out there today and he's mapping over them to create one parcel, which is a better condition than it is today. Furthermore, the other talking point is that strip behind parcel one and two to the south or to the west, that has easements to. There's SDG and easement through there. There's an old San Juan capistrano water easement through there. So the amount of improvements that he can do within that easement by moving the lines around is very minimal, to say the least. I guess one more point to point out is on parcel one, where the Jack in the Box currently sits, you can't access that strip that he's moving the lot line around. It's blocked out by a curb and a planner. So there's really, in our opinion, in his opinion too, there's no negative impact by swinging the line around. And I know he's not going to be open or willing to without a project in hand to make site improvements for moving lot lines around.
Are you saying that the easement that goes from the Jack in the Box site through to the, that it stops at the, at the proposed parcel two lot line?
No, that's a proposed easement. He's just giving himself or his buyer, like I said, I don't know what his end game is, another option to provide access to that back old motel property. And whether he comes in with a project later, a development that comes before you, you know, one thing that I could recommend or suggest that maybe you make that fire emergency access only, you know, or maybe limit the flow from Pacific Coast Highway down to Dana Point. Cause I'm sure that's the concern is people cutting through, right?
Well, if it's, I guess my, my, my thought is that if it's not being requested at this point, we don't have to decide on that. We can approve the lot line and if there's a proposal that comes back at a later date that says they want access, then we can decide on that.
My understanding is he can record that easement without us. He can, he could, he could walk down to the recorder's office tomorrow and record an easement there granting access across that property and we couldn't do anything about it. So with that being said, I'll just reiterate my motion, which is to, I propose that we continue the item and have staff work with the applicant looking into that. At least the landscaping issue and I don't know if there's any other conformance, nonconformance issues. Cause I just, I just think if we, if, if that, it's a reasonable thing to ask. If that development as built was coming, was being proposed for that project, is there anything glaring that we would, glaringly different that we would require? Cause that's essentially what we're doing.
So I guess I have a question. After hearing the applicant's discussion about the back being, you know, an easement, so it doesn't look like it would be eroded anyway because there's an easement there. So I think your concern is alleviated about the through traffic. Can I go back and second Eric's original motion?
Jennifer, correct me if I'm wrong, but since the motion failed originally, perhaps the motion can be made again and then you can see if there's a second. The motion originally failed and then
The second motion failed as well.
Second motion fails, we need, we need a new motion.
So I'm going to go ahead and make another motion that we approve Planning Commission or CDP Coastal Development Permit 20-0013 for a lot line adjustment at 34297 and 34293 Pacific Coast Highway.
And I will second that motion. If we can vote please. So that then passes four to one, so. So moving on to old business, we have no old business. And for new business, we are going to have a preliminary review for a site development permit and tentative parcel map to allow the construction of a three-unit residential condominium and retaining walls at 25022 Silva Road. And I'm assuming I have a staff report.
Yes, John Champ will provide a staff report and then we have a presentation from the applicants.
Thank you.
Before you today is a request for a preliminary review for a triplex proposed along Silva, known as the Silva Triplex. Just to give you an overview of the preliminary reviews by the Planning Commission, it's essentially for the Planning Commission to review projects and provide feedback to the applicant on a potential project. The objective of this review is to identify possible solutions to issues to the project as well as provide feedback focused on those identified issues that could be raised during a formal submittal. Project site is an interior lot located in an RMF 14 zoning designation. It's a 8,287 square foot lot with a 17% slope. The density allowed for the RMF 14 zone, it allows for one unit per 2,600 square feet and this site would allow for three units. This is just to give you some context of the neighborhood. As you can see here with the aerial 3D image, the vacant lot there starred, as well as you can see the adjacent developments that have, that surround it. And these are primarily developed And these were primarily developed during the nineteen seventies, which would be under the county of Orange jurisdiction. And the development standards were quite different then. So as you can see here, there are a number of three-story structures and large or tall stem walls to mitigate the issues of the topography of the site. The project proposed for your consideration is a, is two structures that would create three units with attached garages and one guest stall. The two structures are designed to break up the massing and improve the structure's compatibility with the neighborhood. The tentative parcel map would be necessary for the individual sale of the units, as well as a minor site development permit would be necessary for increased wall height, retaining wall heights. This is the topography map of the site. As you can see here, it, it's a pretty even slope down towards the, the bottom, which as stated is seventeen percent. This is the project site configuration of the site plan. As you can see here, the front structure would be unit A with the attached garage. In between the two structures would be the guest parking stall. And then you'd have units B and C at the back of the lot. Retaining walls would be proposed around the majority of the site or stem walls to address and mitigate the topographical constraints. These are proposed elevations of the site side. And the rear elevation, as you can see here, the top image, the, the topography of the site, along with the adjacent grade of property, requires a, a large retaining wall along the driveway vehicle access side. And then along the south elevation, potential retaining walls are located here in blue. And then you can see at the rear elevation here, there's two stepped retaining walls that would, would be proposed. These are three D renderings or imagines of the site. This is the north elevation here, so this you can see where the driveway and vehicle access is to the front structure and then the motor court area towards the rear and at the front of the second structure that is at the rear of the lot. So as proposed, it would be two stories for both structures. This is the south elevation from Selva. As you can see, there's an adjacent structure here that has been added to the, the images or the modeling proposed before you. And so with this graphic, as you can see, the rear structure would, would not be visible from the street. Some of the project issues that were identified by staff include the seventeen percent slope of the lot, as well as how the height of the structure is measured. In the case of a condominium would be measured from finished grade. The zoning ordinance is limits to the grade for the driveway, given the existing slope is, site is at seventeen percent. And the driveway grade would be required to range from anywhere from eight to ten percent, given the final configuration of the project. Retaining walls and stem walls would be proposed to, or and be needed to mitigate the topography of the site, as well as alternatives have been explored and are requesting the planning commission's consideration in terms of potential height variance to avoid the additional retaining walls that may be necessary for code compliance. So measuring the structure height, without the retaining walls along the south elevation, it would be required to be measured from the, the top image here, which would be at the bottom of the stem wall where the stem wall intersects with the lowest existing grade of the structure or finished grade of the structure, which are starred here for each, each building. Then if the additional retaining walls would be added, it would be additional mass and structure located closer to the side property lines. However, it would elevate the grade of the site, which would result in a higher finished grade to which the structure would be measured. In conclusion, staff is requesting the planning commission review the proposal and provide the applicant with feedbacks and comments in moving forward with the project. The applicant is available and I think would like to say a few words about the project and his process in going through the design.
I can take this off, right? Good evening, commissioners. Yeah, my name is Rob Williams. I'm with Studio Six Architects. The actual owner is here, Todd Lehman. And it's been a process to go through. Staff's done a great job looking at different alternates. John's always on top of things. But one of the things that we are dealing with is the topography. And it drops pretty quick, even though it's seventeen percent. It's not the twenty percent which would, you know, give us some other leeway, but it still gives us a difficult time. When we designed this thing as a condominium, because the code says that you're able to take, if it's a for sale product, you can take it from finished grade. But if you notice, we didn't put retaining walls. We tried to step the retaining walls on the sides and the rear. So they weren't these large retaining walls right up against the property line. We wanted to kind of, kind of soften the retaining walls as it relates to the side property lines, not only to the neighbor to the right or the rear, but the potential development to the vacant lot to the left of our prop, property itself. But what that did, they took a natural grade, which is what that is essentially, and that now became our finished grade. And once that became our finished grade, that level, all my height limits are now coming off of, which is today's natural, but ultimately now determined as finished grade. So we'd have to ask for a variance, even though, you know, we tried to soften it up and try to lessen the impact. Where now I've caught myself in a bad spot where I got asked for a height variance. And, you know, being an architect that I've done this a couple of times, variances are not usually a good word when it comes to planning commission, especially on a vacant lot, even with the topography like it is. So Jonathan, I looked at a couple of ideas that I could, you know, come with some meandering walls on the sides, lower walls, and bring that grade up as it relates to the location of that grade as it relates to the actual structures, because there are two separate buildings. And we're able to eliminate the variance, because now I've raised the finished grade up. But I think the impact of what we're trying to do to try to soften up and not put so many retaining walls on the side yard has caused a, you know, it, it just adds more walls to the structure, because I'm trying to eliminate a variance. And you saw on the, one rendering where the residence right next door, you're not really going to see the majority of the structure down the side. But you are going to see it on the left-hand side, because today it's a vacant lot. Down the road, it won't be a vacant lot. And again, we're not going to probably see that side of the house as well, because they're going to probably put, you know, three units in one day and probably have to ask for the same type of, you know, you know, acknowledgement of the height as it relates to finished grade. So one of the things we try to do is we try to step the property quite a bit. As you saw from the visual from what Jonathan put together, the county didn't care. They just allowed you to kind of raise as many retaining walls as you can, build a three-story structure and you've got a project. I like the fact that you guys want to try to have us work within the grade, step in the property down and create a more sensitive as far as visual to the neighboring properties. But knowing that, with the not adding the walls, I got to ask for a variance. So that's what I'm mainly here to see what you, where you guys are, you know, would you guys be willing to allow not adding some small walls that you're really not going to see, but be able to manipulate that being now as finished grade, not to ask for a variance? Or do you like the fact that the buffer on the side yard with the landscaping is better, it's more appealing, but I technically got to ask for a variance in everything that's attached to that? So I'm here to answer any questions you might have and any direction that you can give us. That'd be very helpful. Thank you.
Okay, so I'll move it to Commissioner Discussion Comments.
Understand exactly what we're looking at here and may need to have the applicant come back up, because I'm going to ask a couple of questions here of staff and then the applicant. So under the scenario. Great, okay. There would be no variances?
That's correct.
Okay. And then if we were to say, look, the walls are, you know, visually not appealing, what, what variances, it would be just a height variance?
That's correct.
Okay. And what would be the difference in elevation from the roof, top of the roof, on the highest point and the lowest point with, with and without the walls? Maybe you can answer that question. Does it, does it change, I guess is my question? Height itself would not change if now if we couldn't, you know, let's say you decided not to allow us to, you know, you said, okay, I don't want to add those walls, but I also don't want you guys to go for a variance. And you've got to use that natural slash finished grade as a height. I'd have to, I could, you know, I'd have to reduce the height of that wall. And a couple of things I forgot to mention. We're tied also into a slope of a driveway. So Public Works has an, an average of ten percent grade max and we're at that. So I can't really, you know, it'd be ideal if I can get that driveway to, you know, go fifteen percent and I could lower that motor court. That would help. I don't, I can't even do that. So I'd have to figure out a way to lower the roof. And right now we're only dealing with nine feet, eight to nine feet in those ceilings. So, you know, it, it, it'd become a very difficult thing to try to eliminate the variance without adding those additional walls. The tallest wall? The tallest wall is actually on the other side of the property, which is up against the vacant lot. It's about twelve and a half feet at one point. And then it goes, it quickly gets smaller as, you know. And as it chases the grade. And as you know, the vacant lot, I mean, we can go back to the site plan, but if you look at the site plan, somebody could probably flip, you know, and build something there and all those retaining walls would disappear, because they're going to have to deal with raising that grade up, trying to fill in the motor court. But they've got more of a difficulty, because they've got two streets they got to deal with and they've got a pretty radical front and front side setback they got to deal with. So, yeah. And then how, what would, if, if there was a variance, what would that variance be from what to what? I think at the worst case, it's about a three-foot variance in height, probably three to four feet on primarily the back unit, not necessarily the front unit. The front unit, we might be about two-foot variance in the height on the front unit. And that's, okay. And I've saw that. Okay, great. And then. That's because I'm also going for, you guys know the height ver, the height better than I do, but a flat roof, I'm allowed twenty-four feet. You know, if I go with a nice pitched roof, six and twelve, I can go higher, but that's not the style we're going with. On the, and I don't know who, maybe staff can answer this, on the, the civil plan, there's a big right away out of the front piece. And it looks like the property line only goes to the center line of the sidewalk. So do you know that there's just property records issues here that need to be cleaned up or?
So that was something that the applicant and staff did look at. And actually, the property line does go to, to the middle of the sidewalk. So there would need to be some kind of easement for public access to the, the sidewalk through that. And, and staff and the applicant have been, been in conversations with that.
Okay. The next is, my notes here. So this is not, I think I heard the answer to this already, but I want to just make sure. This is not, this project doesn't fit into the hillside ordinance?
That's correct. It's, it's three percent off. Twenty percent would allow for a flat roof to be at twenty-nine feet.
Okay. I think that's the majority of my questions. Yep. That's it. Thank you.
Commissioner McCann?
It looks like we're build, proposing to build in the easements. Is that?
No, we're not. There's a four-foot easement that wraps around and it's for utilities. There's an easement that's an overhead easement that will disappear when we bury the lines and it goes into those four-foot easements, so that easement will disappear.
So easement number eleven on the topo survey is going to go away?
Yes, because that's an overhead line that goes from the power pole in the front of our property to the back unit. And that would disappear when we bury everything in the four-foot easement that's already established.
It seems to me like a potential help would be to, if we got permission to steep in the driveway. Has that been considered, discussed with Public Works? Ten percent's not a particularly steep. I mean, I've definitely seen lots steeper.
Correct. There, there is a little bit of nuance to that. And, you know, one is, you, Public Works has looked at it and thought maybe it could be steepened a little bit. But given, given the length of it and the motor court area, there's not a lot of opportunity for, for a significant drop. But staff had expressed to the applicant to look and see if there's any way that it could drop any further to, you know, fit within the Public Works's, you know, maximum allowances. However, you know, staff did also speak to the applicant in terms of, you know, what, what their preferences would be in terms of, you know, putting a development package together for sale units. Would a long, steep drive, you know, what would be their acceptable percent slope for a driveway was also amongst the discussions for consideration.
Okay. So the, I'm a little bit confused and I don't want to get overly technical. And so if it's really technical, just tell me Scott is too technical. We don't want to deal with this right here, okay? But I'm confused how if it's a stepped wall, it sounds like they were proposing to do stepped walls that would be more visually appealing, but that changes the structural low point versus one big tall wall doesn't. And that kind of confuses me. Am I, am I hearing that correctly?
So the wall, the blue walls here would basically, if you were to eliminate those, they're, they're, it would be measured from the bottom of that blue wall. Or I think I, I have a better graphic.
Is that because like it would be a raised, like a, like a heightened stem wall on the foundation of the home?
No, the, the top image here shows just basically a exposed stem wall.
Okay.
Then these blue walls here are separate from the building, independent. And so, and, and so I believe that there's a couple of feet from the side of the building to the side of the retaining wall. So that would essentially elevate that grade or the finished grade to code compliance height of twenty-four feet for each structure. So these would be essentially independent, but fully, it would result in the walls fully encircling the structure versus having some exposed areas, as you see here. Does that answer?
What would be, what would be the exposed there? Oh, the, like the raised stem wall?
Correct, the, the top image. Yes. So basically, it, it's kind of a discussion of the top image or the bottom image.
Okay. So we're, there was never a discussion of stepping, like multiple stepped retaining walls versus one tall retaining wall? It's one tall wall or one heightened, heightened stem wall, basically?
Correct. And given the, the side yard setback here is, is five feet, so there's not a lot of opportunity to step that wall from the structure. And so that's what we have here as, as far as in front of you today. And the, in the image below, the front structure, the structure on the left-hand side, that wall, the maximum height would be approximately seven and a half feet. Whereas on the, the structure to the right would be approximately five and a half feet. So that's, that's the grade differential in terms of the additional elevation that would be needed to bring it into compliance.
Okay. But, but irregardless of either option, the, the top of the roof line elevation is the same. It's just purely semantics?
Correct.
Visually from Selva, it's no different?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, I have no further questions. Oh, I do have a question. So the retaining walls, we talked about, it sounds like the highest point would be twelve and a half feet tall. Is that what I heard?
Yeah, there's only one retaining, if you look at these elevations, there's only one retaining wall that's exposed that's at twelve and a half feet. All the other walls are within the building, except for some small walls or step walls on the rear. So we have, because of the motor court, we have one section of the wall that pushes at twelve and a half feet and then it goes down. That's not engaged with any of the buildings. It's separate retaining wall as part of the motor court at one point at twelve and a half feet.
Okay. So is, is, would that retaining wall be within code height? Or would they be looking for, if they were to build that retaining wall, would they need a variance for that height?
The, the increased heights would fall within the allowances of a minor site development permit that would need to be included with the application. And as you, if you look here, the, the top image.
as you, if you look here, the, the top image, um, is the north elevation, which shows the driveway access and the retaining wall there. So that would be the tallest, that would be the tallest retaining wall, uh, proposed as part of the site. But in either configuration, that wall would be necessary to provide the, the allowable grade for the driveway and motor court.
So that, that wall doesn't change, we're really only talking about the south side elevation walls as being, being, do we do the raised stem wall or the retaining wall, is that correct?
That's correct, actually, there is a, a, a low wall here, uh, just below, it didn't get highlighted, but if you look at the railing for the top image, it's a little bit tough to see, and I don't have a pointer, pointer, I apologize, but there, there is a lower wall there, and that would be five and a half feet in height that would basically extend the height of that railing that you see all the way to the bottom of the, uh, tall retaining wall.
Okay, but for the most part, we're only talking about essentially if you're standing at Selva, the right side, and that's backed right up to that other building that's there right now.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Donner?
I look at the landscape, it says nineteen point six was provided and, and twenty-five percent is required. Is that...
So that, that was a comment that was provided to the applicant, however, given that it's just a preliminary, uh, submittal, staff would need compliance for that to, to bring it forward to planning commission.
And we have one guest space for three units, is that correct?
Yes, that's required for the, uh, within the zoning ordinance, for the three units, th- three, two-bedroom units.
So that, the requirement is one for all three units?
That's correct.
Okay. That's all my questions.
Commissioner Murphy? So John, going back to Roy's question about the, the guest parking, I'm assuming that if this were to come forward, there'd be a condition for a parking use plan or something like that, since there are three individual condos?
Yes, that would need to be included in the, um, in the CCNRs and, and conditions of approval, that that remain a guest parking space.
All right, that is my only question or comment that I have.
Chair, so I, I had questions, but I, I certainly wanna give the applicant feedback.
Okay.
There's a time for that.
Sure, go ahead.
Okay. Um, so thanks for bringing this forward, um, you know, I think this, it's, you know, my belief around variances and, um, is pretty clear, it's, I actually believe they're part of our code, they're there for a reason, and I think this is, highlights one of those times where a variance may be more appropriate when the solution to not having, the variance didn't really change anything other than that, those retaining walls, which, you know, they're, you, we're not even gonna see them on that side, so I don't really know what the value is to, to having you install those. Um, so my, my feeling is, you know, keep, keep, is, you know, in this situation, if I was presented with a project, you know, and the caveat that you're meeting the other standards, and we're not doing a bunch of variances, but this is a, a variance focused heavily on the nuances of our code, the, the nature of the slope and the need to keep the driveway at whatever ten or ten percent or less, I think a variance makes more sense to me than a retaining wall, because, um, you know, it's a piece of paper versus a bunch of block that no one's gonna see that may be visually harsh, but I, I, I don't know the difference between a visually harsh wall or a stem wall. You could treat both of those, so, um, if there is a concern around that, I mean, what I would say is, look at those stem walls and see what you can do to make them look as nice as you can. Landscape, you know, the, the edges where you can provide landscaping, um, that will, will obviously create relief, um, from your neighbors and from just the visual elements of a, of a blank wall, but otherwise, um, you know, it's a tough site. I know there's been multiple applicants that have tried to come in here and do something on it, and it hasn't really gone very far, and, um, you know, housing's an important thing, I'm a housing advocate. I also, um, think we have to be careful when, when we do anything, and, and so I appreciate staff bringing this forward to us to look at it before, um, it go into the full process, um, but in general, I don't see any other major issues here. I spent a little bit of time onsite today and, uh, the day before. My biggest concern will be, you know, the response from the neighbors, and I don't know if the applicants reached out to the neighbors, but I always suggest that if you do have people living around you, that you talk to them, so they know what's coming, because if they get, when they get that notice, that they're, they'll show up, and, um, if they don't know what's going on, then they'll make stuff up that seems appropriate, and I don't mean that in a derogatory way, but planning and development are tricky, and if somebody just sees height variance, m- their, most people's head goes to, is it destruct, the entire building's gonna be extremely tall, and, and so I just always caution applicants, I, I think you're, um, a little bit more experienced than most, so my guess is you've already done that or you will do that, but otherwise, I think it seems like a reasonable approach to a sort of an unreasonable slope. Those are my comments.
Anyone else wanna give any feedback? Commissioner McCann?
Nothing other than I would concur with what Commissioner Nelson said.
All right, so I assume that closes that item correct? Thank you. So moving on, do we have any staff reports this evening?
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Okay, any commissioner comments? Gosh, you're making it easy. All right, with that, I will adjourn us until our meeting on August twenty-fourth.